Excuse me. Thank you. The Board of Appeal for June 7th is now underway. Please remember that all conversations should cease. Any conversations in the back of the room, please take them outside so that we can hear what's happening. Make sure all your cellphones are off so we're not distracted. And just a reminder, if you're here to speak in support or in opposition to a project, please put your name and address on the record. We are here to find out as much as we can about the project. So if somebody prior to you has already made, has already raised your concern, please just put your name and address on the record. Finally, this, in conformance with the open meeting law, this meeting is being livestreamed. In addition, ISD staff who support the Board of Appeal are taking notes. So, Mr. Fortune?
Good morning. We will be calling at 9:30 the extensions. Calling BZC 33444, 108 to 108A Dorchester Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, guests. My name is McDermott Quilty Miller. With me is Ted Tolukey, the project architect. I wrote to the board on May 18th requesting an extension of this relief. The reason being that the project was sold recently. Mr. Tolukey represents the buyer. They would like to continue on with this project as originally permitted by the board and would like an extension in order to accomplish that.
How long are you looking for?
One year.
Motion for a one-year extension?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set.
Thank you.
This is quite a bit of the next case that I want to call for the record, each one of them into the record. Calling BZC 33336, 86 Liverpool Street. Calling BZC 3337, 90 Liverpool Street. BZC 3338, 94 Liverpool Street. BZC 3339, 98 Liverpool Street. BZC 33340, 106 Liverpool Street. BZC 33341, 102 Liverpool Street. BZC 33342, 84, 84 Liverpool Street. BZC 3343, 88 Liverpool Street. BZC 33344, 92 Liverpool Street. BZC 33345, 104 Liverpool Street. BZC 33346, 100 Liverpool Street. BZC 3347, 96 Liverpool Street. BZC 33348, 99 to 101 Border Street. BZC 33349, 80 Liverpool Street. BZC 3350, 82 Liverpool Street. And BZC 3351, 78 Liverpool Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the board, Jeff Drago of Drago and Toscano, 15 Broad Street. I'm here today on behalf of my client, the neighborhood of Affordable Housing, seeking an extension on the permits. My client was approved last year. This is an affordable housing project, 15 townhouses and two large apartment buildings, and the address is listed below. They are working with state tax credits and also D and D funding, which has been held up a bit, but it looks like they're going in the right direction. We're looking for a year extension if possible.
One year?
One year.
Motion to grant a one-year extension.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set.
Thank you.
Calling the next case, calling BZC 33423, 77 to 81 Terrace Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Nick Cizula, McDermott Quilty Miller, 28 State Street, Suite 802, here in Boston. We're requesting an extension subsequent to the zoning decision being entered with ISD. There was an rebuttal appeal to Superior Court. That appeal is still ongoing as of today, although we understand and we believe that during an appeal, the applicable period of limitations regarding the use of zoning relief is told. And during the pendency of that appeal, based on our conversations with counsel at ISD, we'd like to request a one-year extension of our zoning relief just to make the record abundantly clear.
Can I have a motion, please?
Motion to extend one year.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set.
Thank you.
Calling the next case, the board final arbiter, calling BOA 321-90, 310 to 348 Harrison Avenue. Companion case, BOA 33412, 30 to 36 Traveler Street. And BOA 321-91, 350 to 354 Harrison Avenue. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Members of the board, Mark Lacass Business, Lacass Law LLC, 75 Arlington Street, Boston, Mass. I represent the developer, National Development of the Ink Block in South End. The three requests before you today are requests to conform the prior zoning decisions for these three buildings, which constitute part of the Ink Block project, with respect to the restricted parking overlay district conditional use permit for the non-residential parking at three of the buildings. We appeared before the BRA board on February 11, 2016, seeking a notice of project change of our prior developments under Article 80B, Large Project Review, simply changing the number of surface parking spaces for the restaurant and retail space for buildings 2, 3, and 4 from 67 to 50, basically as a result of rearranging the surface area of the entire complex. We did add 38 spaces for the residential component, but that's not subject to the RPod. So the board final arbiter requests before you simply seek to confirm that our prior RPod permits are consistent with our approvals under the notice of project change by the BRA board, changing the non-residential parking from 67 spaces to 50 spaces.
So 67 to 50 spaces, and will that be, in fact, enough for the non-residential uses in the project?
Yes, because we also have the large surface parking deck for the Whole Foods grocery store, which contains 110 parking spaces. And what they found is that that use is sufficient supply for the other retail tenants as well.
So these additional spaces are for the other retail tenants? That's the...
So this is a reduction of 17 spaces?
Reduction of 17 on some of the other surface areas behind one of the buildings, but we also still have...
But the purpose of those spaces is for the other big buildings to be brought in progress?
Correct. There are some smaller restaurant uses. There's a bank, salad place going in. But as I said, we're adding 38 spaces in a new underground parking garage in building number five, which will be the last building to be constructed and known as the Sienna condominiums.
But those are for the residents, right?
Those will be residential, and those are not subject to the RPod requirements of this board.
Can I have a motion, please?
Motion to grant the relief requested. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set.
Thank you so much.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 495-855-425, La Graine Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Morning, Dennis Quilty, Attorney McDermott Quilty Miller, representing the property owner at this address. Morning.
Good morning.
Can I? This matter, I wrote to the board, May 23rd, requesting this hearing under board final arbiter with regard to the style of motion that was made when we were here before you for denial. It came to my attention, on information and belief, that the intention actually was denial without prejudice, and I was here before the board to ask if the correction could be made to the vote to reflect what I believe was the intention of the maker of the motion at the time it was made.
Mr. Quilty, I, my, my recollection of it was, was that generally there were a lot of issues related to this project, and our concern was that we do not see the project in the same form, and therefore the motion was for denial. May I have a confirmation of that?
As the maker of the motion, it was for denial, but it was not, but it was with the intent that it'd come back with, with an altered proposal.
Okay, may I have a second?
Right, but isn't there another issue here? As I recall, one of the issues that this board was having a difficult time with was the seemingly fluidity of the plan, that there were motions to move the entrance in the parking garage from one end of the, one portion of the building to the other. And it seems to me that if that change is made, then in fact, a simple reapplication is inevitable. Problem with the denial is that you can't come back to the same project within a year, but if you change the project...
Right.
So, and I know that certainly this member...
Right.
...had a difficult time with the description of how this thing was going to change or not change, and, you know, we, we don't give approvals based on elastic drawings.
Okay, so was there a motion? Was there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Second.
Motion carries.
What was the motion?
Your motion.
To confirm the, because you made the motion for denial.
Well, I was explaining.
Yes.
I didn't make one, I was explaining. And again, to reiterate, reiterate, Board Member Pizzani said if the plant, if it comes back in an altered form, then, then it doesn't have to wait for that, that length of time.
So is there a motion?
Motion to confirm the denial.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? You're all set.
Thank you.
BOA 560-922, 86 Tuttle Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is James Christopher. Address 247 Middle Street in Weymouth. I'm here on behalf of my parents, William and Mary Christopher, for 86 Tuttle Street.
Please tell us why you're here.
This project was before the board recently to enclose the rear porch. Since then, my parents would like to increase the size of the addition. I've included for the record a copy of the permit for the original scope, along with the letter from Mark Joseph, the plans examiner, that states that extending the enclosed addition does not create any, any new zoning violations.
So what was the original size that we approved, and what's the new proposed size?
I believe it was five feet by about eight feet, and now it's to five feet by about 13 feet.
Motion to grant relief requested. I mean, this is clearly a little bit of a minimalist fall, but no more. Heard people as board final arbiter.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set.
Thank you.
Calling the 9:30 reconsiderations, calling BOA 573-776, 89 to 95 Brighton Avenue. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Peter Cam from Goldson and Stores, on behalf of the applicant, with me Noah Maslin from Eden Properties.
Attorney Peter Lyons, 99 Fulton Street, Boston, Mass.
Noah Maslin, 107 Brighton Avenue, all those things.
Please tell us why you're here.
Madam Chair, we were before this board on May 10th. The proposal that we had has had significant public process and public support. We ultimately were one vote short, and we simply asked for reconsideration under Section 5.3 of the code.
And where is the reconsideration of?
The reconsideration is of the very same project that we were before you for May 10th on. And considering the efforts made on behalf of the applicant, the outreach to the community, and the significant public support, we simply request the opportunity to respond to the comments that were raised by this board at that time.
And to provide additional information to the ZBA that we did not provide during that hearing.
So are you expecting us today to reopen the case and hear the additional information?
Yes, at a later date.
At a later date?
Yeah.
So what is this request for precisely?
The request is a motion for reconsideration under Section 5.3 that with the support of five members of this board would allow us to reopen a new hearing on the merits of the project in order to respond to the board's comments.
And what was the motion at, at, and what was the motion on 510? Was it a denial?
There were several votes taken. I would characterize, from my point of view, there being a bit of confusion on my behalf, and certainly in terms of the sequence and the number of votes taken, but ultimately it was a denial.
Okay.
I have a question. Can I have counsel explain to me what 5.3 is and what our, what our options are here?
This request is simply a request for the project to be reconsidered by the board. There should be no discussion as to the merits of the project today, or a rehearing on the project, so to speak, today. It's just with, if the board approves the request for reconsideration, what we would do is we would re-advertise and re-advertise and re-note for hearing at a later date for a new discussion on, on the, or rediscussion essentially on the merits of the project.
But...
So today's vote would be just for an opportunity for the project to be reconsidered.
Ms. Pizzani?
Yeah, I'm concerned with the presentation of it as a quote-unquote reconsideration. Okay, this is the first time that this member has been exposed to that, and it comes a logical question, why then doesn't everybody who's been denied come before us and ask for reconsideration? I mean, it seems to me that the decision was clear. I, in fact, made a motion for its approval. The board did not feel that that motion had merit, therefore it failed, therefore it was a denial. You know, I see no benefit in providing a reconsideration for this project. It went on, we had ample discussion. I think the board was reasonably well-informed as to what the merits or non-merits of it were, and I'm just concerned that if, if we do this, that it just opens a floodgate, because I don't know how one says no. And the decision of the board was, it is what it is.
I say that I agree with the applicant's, that there was a lot of confusion after the presentation. I mean, there's a motion to approve. I was allowed to make a motion to defer it, and I know that this board has in the past, you know, even after a motion, a motion to approve, and it's not passed, we have allowed other motions, so there is some inconsistency on this board on that matter.
So the, the ultimate decision was a denial? And as, as mentioned prior, a denial means we just, we just don't want to see that project in the same form. We might see it in another form. So that is always an option open to you for your consideration.
We understand that, but we felt that there was significant information related to specific topics that we either didn't do a good job of or didn't offer that answers or information.
So essentially, the bottom line is you're proposing to come back, you're proposing to come back with the same project, but you're requesting to come back prior to that year. Ultimately, is what it boils down to.
Madam Chair, there were specifics that were requested, and I appreciate the members' comments about the precedent here. 5.3 does permit this board, in their discretion, to reconsider. Presumably, there are times when it is appropriate to do so. We maintain that this is one of those times. Had the votes been a motion first for reconsider, for a deferral, perhaps the board would have acted differently. The sequence of votes may have been relevant. What we simply request is that each board member consider some of the specifics that were identified in the comments that the chair and others made, specifically with respect to concerns about student housing and how we would regulate that, concerns about parking and how we would address that. And we simply did not feel we had an opportunity, and had we had a deferral, we would have had an opportunity at least to present that information to the board.
Well, the request for a deferral, as you know, because, and, and some of you know, Mr. Fortune always asks right up front, is this a request for deferral? Generally, we do not hear the entire merits of the case before granting a deferral. I mean...
That's right.
Okay? So, go ahead.
I think it's a little bit of a slippery slope to sort of anticipate what people were thinking or may have been thinking, and I don't think you really want to go there. And I think Mr. Pizzani's point is, is well-taken, that this is not something we do. Everybody who felt like they didn't present something comprehensively enough or thoroughly enough would come back and say, oh, I want a reconsideration, because I want to do a better job. You get one bite at the apple. However, I do remember the particulars. As Pizzani made a motion for approval, it failed, and it would have been straight to denial. And then Peter made a motion to defer, and that failed, and we were left with a denial because nothing had passed. So that was a little odd. I agree. And, and based on that, but also taking Chair Person's, Royo's comments into consideration, if you come back with the same proposal, then in some ways, then you're running the risk of what Mr. Pizzani said, which is we just open the floodgates for every single thing to be reconsidered. So I don't have a problem with a motion to reconsider, but that's based on the understanding that, that a different substance of proposal comes to this board.
But they can do that anyway.
They can. That's right.
Right. Without a formal, we vote on that.
That's correct.
So I think it's in your, in your court, but I'm going to make a motion to deny, to maintain our original decision of denial.
Mr. Pizzani, before we get there, can I ask another question?
Yeah.
And I'm looking for a little clarification, because I was a little bit confused during this process. At that point where we decided to vote for a deferral, what, what a number of votes did we need? Matt, you might be able to help with this. Chairperson, you might be able to help with this. What number of votes did we need for that deferral at that time?
Well, it's a standard five clauses.
I remember asking for a recount, and I never given that.
Okay, so...
And I, I remember that I was a little bit confused, being new on the board, and I needed, I probably should have asked for clarification, which is what I'm doing now. So, you know, I...
Okay, so, go ahead. So there's a motion. Is there a motion?
Yes, I made a motion to maintain our original decision.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed.
I'm opposed.
Okay, so I get to decide, and I, it's going to stay as a denial? Thank you.
Calling the next cases for rediscussion. Calling BOA 549-038, 104 to 106 Winter Street. There's companion cases, BOA 549-039, 104 to 106 Winter Street. BOA 549-041, 108, 108 to 110 Winter Street. And BOA 549-040, 108 to 110 Winter Street. This is for 104, 106 Winter Street. This is to change occupancy from six units to 12 units in renovations, including installation of a sprinkler system and updated fire alarms. Violation of Article 50, multi-family dwelling unit, use of 12 is a forbidden use. Article 50, Section 29, large area for additional dwelling units is insufficient. Article 50, Section 29, floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 50, Section 29, maximum building height is excessive. Article 50, Section 29, usable open space is insufficient. Article 50, Section 43, off-street parking requirement is insufficient. This is... This is in reference to the premises at 104, 106 Winter Street, Section Architectural Access Board, 521 CMR, Chapter 10, Section 10.1, the general public use in the common use spaces of multiple dwellings. This is for 108 to 110 Winter Street. This is to change occupancy from six units to 12 units and include finishing the attic space, renovate and include installation of sprinkler system and updated fire alarm. 108 and 110 will officially be connected as one building. This is the, this is Section Architectural Access Board, 521 CMR, Chapter 10, Section 10.1, the general public use in the common use spaces of multiple dwellings. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Roberto DiMarco. I am the counsel for the petitioner. Address is 350 Main Street, Malden.
Please tell us what's being proposed.
Madam Chair, since first filing this project, we've met several times with the community. Their major concern was the number of units. Since those meetings and through continued work with the community, we revised the unit count in each building to be nine. So the total for the two buildings is 18 units. We've also created a handicap accessible ramp in between the two buildings to allow access to the grade level units of both buildings, and we've increased the number of off-street parking spaces.
So it sounds then that there are a couple of these, your violations that you are not requesting then, that you're saying are being met?
Yes, Madam Chair. We are, at this point, the parking is now at a one-to-one ratio. We've also...
You've met the architectural access requirements?
Requirements.
Is there a building code?
I believe that still stands.
Still stands, okay. And have any of your other violations changed?
We have now reduced the, the maximum number of units, which was at, is...
We have now reduced the maximum number of units, which was at, is eight for the area. We went from 12 down to nine, so we're one over. So, we've reduced the violation on that particular code.
How do the plans look, Mr. Pizzani?
The drawings are adequate. James, could you address the building code violation?
I apologize. That's now been met.
Make a motion to deny the building code relief requested.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so now to the merits of the case. How do the plans look, Mr. Pizzani?
Drawings are adequate. The accessibility has been well dealt with.
One more question. What are the unit sizes?
The units range, Madam Chair, from 1,400 to 32, 1,085 square feet with the large being 1,895 square feet. That's across the two buildings. They're large units, they're three and four bedroom units, and that was also as a result of minimizing the unit count and working with the neighborhood to provide multiple bedrooms for the option for families to move into these buildings.
Okay. Is any other questions from the Board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this project?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Kyra Fox, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, would like to go on record in support. As stated, this was thoroughly vetted through the community. They have gone back and forth on the design and were able to come up with the current plan, which addresses some of their major concerns regarding parking, homeownership opportunities, and overall just community input. And we are strongly supporting the project as it stands.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Justin Brown from Counselor Tito Jackson's office. The counselor would like to give his support.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lorraine Wheeler, and I'm here representing the Roxbury Path Forward Neighborhood Association, which is the Malden Street Historic District where the building is located. And we, after a long process that, you know, included lots of different moving parts, we do support the project because they did agree to preserve and renovate the two properties. They're making a charitable donation in that neighborhood. But we still just had a couple of questions that if the Board could address. So, one of the questions was that several times, the architect gave us a rendering. You have a rendering now, and we like the rendering, but the plans that we saw were very plain. And so, we had talked to the architect about adding panels and molding to make the building look, you know, more historic and fit within the neighborhood.
I think we can address that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Brian Keith, 105 Mount Pleasant Avenue, Roxbury, President of the Mount Pleasant Neighborhood Association. Although the agreement wasn't perfect, they did make a very strong attempt to work with the community, and I would like to go on record in support of the project.
Thank you. Is anybody else here to speak in support? Is anybody here in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve with BRA Design Review.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And this acknowledges the withdrawal and the meeting of the requirements of the parking and the architectural access. I just want to make that clear, okay?
Following the next case, it's calling BOA 539-072, 14 Breck Avenue. It's also a companion case, building code, BOA 539-03073, 14 Breck Avenue. Purpose is to legalize the work done on the first floor without a permit, change occupancy from a two-family to a three-family, and install sprinklers and a fire alarm. Building code, Section 1208.2, minimum ceiling height, ceiling height is insufficient. Basement egress windows to be revised. Submit two full set of construction drawings, including fire protection. Name and address for the record, please.
Kevin Joyce, 50 Franklin Street, Boston 02110, for the applicant. Good morning, Madam Chairwoman, members of the Board. This matter was originally on for May 24th. It was deferred until today because of the building code issue. Subsequently, the Mayor's Office has requested that we seek a further deferral to hold one more Mayor's Office meeting in the neighborhood. We've had an extensive community process already, began about a year ago. We've revised the design, and they've made that request, so courtesy...
Make a motion for deferral. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The date, please.
July 26th.
Thank you.
July 26th.
11:30, July 26th.
Thank you.
Are there any, I'm sorry, we'll go to the next case. Well, actually, we'll do the 9:30 cases before we do the building code. Are there any deferrals or withdrawals for 9:30? Address, please.
Good morning, 3-4 RD Street in East Boston.
Hold on a second, please. I'm sorry, just for the record. Calling BOA 579-098, 3 RD Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Lorraine Scatino, 1216 Bennington Street, East Boston. I'm here today requesting a deferral because Attorney Linz is actually on vacation. The client did ask for Attorney Linz to present the case, so we're asking for a short deferral till July 12th. We are completed with the community process, so we are just asking for that short deferral.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion to defer.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The date, please.
July 26th.
Thank you.
Address, please.
714 East Fifth Street.
For the record, calling BOA 573-732, 714 East Fifth Street. Name and address for the record, please.
George Marancy, I'm an attorney with the business address of 350 West Broadway in South Boston. Madam Chair, members, we'd like, hopefully, a July date in this matter. We need to engage in some additional conversations with the Butters about this project before proceeding.
May I have a motion?
Motion for deferral. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The date, please.
We have a date of July 26th. Thank you. Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals for 9:30? Hearing them, we'll go back up to the 9:30 cases for building code. Calling BOA 585-095, 27 to 35 Harrison Avenue. Is Harrison Avenue here? Okay. We'll hold on to this case. Calling the first case for 9:30, calling BOA 573-842, 2 Boylston Street. Purpose is to change occupancy to include an adult vocational training and educational International Institute of New England on the third floor, Urban College on the first and second floor, and office renovations. The violation is Article 38, Section 18, use of an adult vocational training and educational use is conditional. Name and address for the record, please.
Jeff Thielman, President and CEO of the International Institute of New England. I live in Arlington, Massachusetts. My, our address is 2 Boylston Street. That's where our operation is.
Ashley Dunn, Dyer Brown Architects, 6 Glenville Terrace, Jamaica Plain.
Michael Taylor, the President of the Urban College of Boston, 505 Congress Street.
I'm the Attorney, Attorney Moore Taylor, counsel for...
So, please tell us what's being proposed, because I know you guys already moved in.
Yeah, we haven't moved in yet. We've begun work. So, we are, we are running an adult training program, and our organization works with refugees and immigrants in three locations in New England, Lowell, Manchester, and Boston. Boston is our largest field office. The Boston site has six training rooms, one computer lab, room for counseling, and case support for refugees and immigrants. And we were issued an at-risk permit. Work has begun. We expect to finish and move in by August 10th.
So, how many students are you expecting to be in this space?
Well, six classrooms. At the most, you would have be 120 adult learners in the building at a time during a session. Total capacity for a year could be more than that.
What is the current use of this place, or what was the...
Well, it's the China Trade Building, 2 Boylston Street, third floor. I think there was state offices there. I don't know what was there before us.
Previously, retail and state offices, and since the BRA purchase is being converted over to office use, and essentially, we're asking for, to convert for this portion to institutional for the vocational training, adults.
So, this is the third floor. Can you speak, can, Michael, can you speak to the first, or Tony there, speak to the first and second floors?
Sure. The Urban College of Boston is a two-year private nonprofit accredited associate degree institution. We established 23 years ago by A, B, C, D. Apparently, we serve 1,400 students, 70% of whom live in Boston. Again, I repeat that, 70% of whom live in Boston. On a given semester, we serve approximately 100 students from Monday through Saturday. Almost all of our classes are held in the evening. Our student population is 96% women, 92% minority. Our remarkable diversity is 59% Hispanic, 22% African-American, and 11% Asian. Arabic age is 39. Almost all of our students work full-time, raising a family, attending their college op-...
Mr. Taylor, can you tell us how many classrooms are being proposed?
We're going to have 14 classrooms in between the first and second floor.
Okay, and will, there be any shared space?
Well, we hope, and Mr. Taylor and I have spoken a great deal, and we hope to work together and collaborate, and it's possible that we'll offer some programs together, yeah.
The classrooms for Urban College will be used solely by Urban College?
Primarily, yes. We can do some partnership programs with organizations like that.
Okay.
I would also add that the building has common space that will be used by students from both of the institutions.
Okay. And what is the ground floor treatment going to be? Who's going to be responsible for that?
We're establishing four classrooms on the first floor. What the rest of the first floor is outfitted with, I'm not sure. That's up to the, I guess, the landlord, which is the BRA.
Okay. How do the, any, how do the plans look, Mr. Pizzani?
Drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the Board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Danny Chain, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, would like to go on record in support. The applicant has supported the China Act of Meeting and a civic organization. Thanks.
And Chair members of the Board, Minor Ferris, representing the Carpenters Union, would like to go on record in support of this project.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the Board, Gary Water Electrician, local 103, would like to speak in strong support also. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody here in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to grant relief requested.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? You're all set. Good luck.
Thank you. Following the next case, following BOA 586-812, 326 Meridian Street. This is to erect a three-unit residential building. The violation is Article 53, Section 9, insufficient lot area for dwelling units, 2,000 square feet for the first two units. Article 53, Section 9, insufficient additional lot area for each additional dwelling unit, 1,000 square feet. Article 53, Section 9, insufficient lot width, 40 feet. Article 53, Section 9, insufficient lot frontage, 40 feet. Article 53, Section 9, exceeds the floor-to-air ratio of 1.0. Article 53, Section 9, exceeds the number of stories, three. Article 53, Section 9, insufficient usable open space per dwelling unit, 200 square feet per dwelling unit. Article 53, Section 9, insufficient side yard with five feet. Article 53, Section 9, insufficient rear yard depth, 30 feet. And Article 53, Section 36, insufficient number of off-street parking, 1.5. Name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Jeff Drago, Drago and Toscano, with an address of 15 Broad Street. I'm the attorney for the applicant, Mr. Guiney, who's with me. I also have Mercedes Valaba, who's his representative, and James Christopher from RCA, the architect on the project. We're here today seeking zoning relief to erect a three-unit residential condominium building at 326 Meridian Street. As it stands now, it's a 1,700-square-foot vacant lot. It's next to a park in the East Boston section of Boston. The gross square footage of the building is 4,546 square feet. The unit breakdown, Unit 1 is the larger unit, goes into a garden level on the bottom floor at 1,558 square feet. It's a three-bedroom, two-bath unit. Unit 2 and 3 are similar in size. They're two-bed, one-bath units, the second unit being 950 square feet, and the third-floor unit 985 square feet. For the violations, the violations that were triggered, the minimum lot size for this area, we would require additional 3,000 square feet. The other violations were also FAR required is 1.0. We're at 2.67. Minimum side yard is two and a half. We have three, which we meet on one side, but zero on the other. Minimum rear yard required is 30, and we are at five feet. And the parking is actually, one per unit is required. We do not have any parking.
We have zero parking.
We don't have any parking, which is common in that area of Meridian Street, if you look at the surrounding map. We did get the support...
I suppose we can be part of the solution or part of the problem, right?
It, the grading of that area, it would drive up the height of the building, so the community really wanted us to keep with the look and historic integrity of that area, which we agreed to. We did get the support of the Eagle Hill Civic Association, and we did have an Butters meeting that went well as well.
Okay. I think you've answered the, you've anticipated the questions. How do the plans look, Mr. Pizzani?
Drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the Board?
On A4, wouldn't say front elevations, you mean rear elevations, is that correct?
Correct, that's a timeout. I'd also like to address the building code issues, Madam Chair.
Sure.
The multiple dwellings and number of exits and continuity has been...
I'm sorry, did we have a building code issue on this one?
Yes.
There were two, two, there were, this was originally a four-unit proposal, so it actually came down, but there were two building code violations that James wanted to explain.
Hold on, Mr. Pizzani.
We did not, we did not appeal the building. They were actually worked out, so...
Right.
Only zoning.
We only have zoning before us.
Correct, because I believe they were worked out.
Yeah, that's what we were addressing, is that I thought you would listen to them, but we've been working with Lisa Hahn, who's the planning director at ISD, to resolve those issues.
So, they're not put...
They won't be, they will not be...
But in the original application, that's why I talked to you.
In the original state of the application, with four units, we had the egress issue and a side yard issue that we've resolved.
Solved and solved, okay. Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Claudia Correa from the FS of Neighborhood Services, would like to go on record in support. They, we hosted an abudding meeting, there was no opposition during the abudding meeting. And after going back a couple of times to the Eagle Hill Civic Association, they reduced the size of the units, and also, they were asked to maintain the historical design of that area in East Boston. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody here in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, a quick question. There is no parking. I know that it seems that everyone in the community is supporting this, but is there something that we can hang our hats on in terms of mitigating the impact of the zero parking for this?
Around the corner is the Humana School, so it is open to all residents to park in, which is common in that area. It's right, literally right, walking distance of two minutes across the way, which, and Border Street, which is the abutting street, is basically commercial, so at night, there's plenty of parking to walk to.
Thank you.
Motion to accept with BRA Design Review.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Good luck.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 585-302-67 Cottage Street. This is to change occupancy to a three-family residential and full interior renovation and replace existing rear decks with new addition. Violation is Article 53, Section 9, additional dwelling unit, insufficient additional lot area for each additional dwelling unit, 1,000 square feet. Article 53, Section 9, a new rear addition exceeds floor-to-air ratio of 1.0. Article 53, Section 9, additional dwelling unit, insufficient open space per dwelling unit, 300 square feet. Article 53, Section 9, new rear addition, insufficient side yard, is two and a half feet. Article 53, Section 9, new rear addition and insufficient rear yard, 40 feet. Article 53, Section 56, additional dwelling unit, insufficient off-street parking of 1.0. Name and address for the record, please.
Sure. Attorney Lorraine Scatino from Richard Linz's office, 1216 Bennington Street, East Boston. And with me is Patrick Butler from RGE Rail Tech. This proposal is to actually renovate the existing, it's already an existing three-unit building. The building jacket had it listed as a store, so we're here today to legalize it. My clients brought the, bought the property a year ago, and they plan to... and they plan to enclose the rear decks to add some additional floor area for each of the units. The three units are gonna be between 565 to 750 square feet, one-in-two bedroom units. And the project is intended to be marketed as condominiums. With that, I'd like to just add that the surrounding area does consist of mostly three-family buildings, and a three-family is allowed as a right. There will be also a complete life safety update to the building, including sprinklers and the like.
So, um, I'm looking at the street view here. Which is the parcel, the parcel that you're talking about? The one towards the left? Which page, Madam Chair? This is the Google Street View.
Yes, the one in the middle.
Okay. Okay. And, um, uh, how do the plans look, Mr. Pizzani?
Drawings are adequate. What are the square footages of the units?
Same range in square footage with the proposed addition from 565 to 750 square feet.
And the parking requirement is a one-to-one?
It is, but as mentioned, this has been pre-existing, so we're not really changing any footprint or anything like that. And the additional dwelling unit has been there for quite some time.
Have you been, has, have taxes been paid on it as a three-family?
Yes, they have, actually.
Okay.
And the Jefferies Point Neighborhood Association has voted to approve this matter.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
So, yeah, I'm, just to be clear, is the only thing you're asking for is the legalization of existing?
The legalization of the existing third unit, as well as the floor area for enclosing the rear decks.
Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Claudia Correa from Neighborhood Services. There was no opposition during the abudders meeting. The Jefferies Point Neighborhood Association voted in favor. The comments from some of the residents that they're happy to see this building being renovated. Thanks.
Thank you. Is anybody here in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion for approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Calling BOA 578-062-27 Princeton Street. This is to extend living space into the basement, include one-bedroom and bathroom to. Violation is Article 9, Section 1, reconstruction extension of a non-conforming building. And Article 53, Section 9, floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Name and address for the record, please.
I had my tenant.
Name and address for the record, please. Your name and address.
My name, Michael Toretzke, 27 Princeton Street Trust.
Will you be speaking at the table, too?
Yep.
Let's put your name and address on the record.
Gabriel Toretzke, 27 Princeton Street.
Are you gonna be assisting him?
Yep.
Okay, so please tell us what's being proposed.
I have my tenant about six years, and they have four kids, so kids, it's gross. And they asked me about to edit basement level to additional to first-floor apartment, so.
How many units in this building?
Three units.
This is a three-family?
Three-family units.
Okay, oh, and so you're looking to extend that basement unit into, the first-floor unit into the basement? Okay.
It's about 600 square feet.
Mr. Pizzani, how, how are the plans?
Drawings are adequate. Um, I have a question for you. What is the floor-to-ceiling height in the basement?
About seven and something.
Seven and exactly what? Seven what?
Seven and five.
Seven, five? Okay.
Yeah, what's on the plans is 84 inches, which is seven feet. Also, what's on the plans is 68 inches, which is five foot eight.
Are there any bas, any bedrooms proposed in the basement?
There is one bedroom proposed in the basement.
Uh, just one bedroom and one bathroom.
Any possibility of that becoming a future unit?
It has a separate means of entrance, although it is connected with the kitchen of the area up above the unit.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, uh, your structural engineer drew these drawings. You know, from a zoning point of view, it, it makes a reasonable amount of sense. The question is whether or not there's a building code issue.
Okay.
And they haven't been cited for building code, so I'm not sure whether or not we want to resume a building code or simply leave it to ISD with the occupancy requirement stage.
Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Claudia Correa from Neighborhood Services. During the abudders meeting, he had a lot of support. His neighbors showed up to support him, also the tenants. Especially the tenant of the first floor, she said that she's been there for more than five years, and they're expanding, so. In addition to that, the Eagle Hill Civic Association voted in favor of this proposal. Thanks.
Thank you. Is anybody here in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Yeah, I wanna make a motion to grant the zoning relief requested, and while it hasn't been asked for, there is sufficient reason to believe that there may be a building code violation. So therefore, the zoning relief is granted without building code relief. So what that means is that if ISD cites you for building code, change it. Don't come back and ask for relief because it won't get granted, and therefore, the zoning would end up going away because you.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set.
Calling BOA 574-939-15 Monument Avenue. This is to change occupancy from a one-family to a two-family. No work to be done. It's an existing condition. Violation is Article 62, Section 29, off-street parking is insufficient. And Article 62, Section 8, insufficient open, usable open space. Name and address for the record, please.
Arthur and Cynthia Kolpak, 15 Monument Avenue, Chowstown.
Please tell us what you're proposing.
We're proposing to, uh, we'd like to be able to stay in our house that we've occupied since 1979. Our assessing went up 40%. In 2013, we changed from a two to a one because we were informed by assessing that it would be a little bit lower, but in 2016, it went up 40%, and so now, we would like to go back. So, um, in case, in case, well, it's not, it's not in case, it's gonna go up again. The assessment's gonna go up, and we would like to mediate that by being able to rent the apartment.
So you're proposing to change the occupancy from a one to a two-family?
Yes.
Where is the second unit going to be?
It's on the first floor.
It's on the first floor, and how large is it?
It's about 850 square feet.
850 square feet, and you have two violations. One is open space, and the second is parking. Is there gonna be any parking provided?
Yes, we have deeded parking, indoor parking half a block away, that we've actually owned for 30 years.
So there's one deeded parking to the building?
Uh, there's two.
There's two. Okay. How do the plans look, Mr. Pizzani?
Drawings are adequate. Can you mention the square footage is 300?
850.
350?
Eight, 850, about, I think.
300?
850.
800?
Yeah.
For the first floor unit?
Yeah.
Any other questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'm Christopher Green from Neighborhood Services. We are in support of 15 Monument Ave. We had an abudders meeting on Monday, April 25th. All those in attendance were in support of Mr. Paul Kolpak, and willing to lend their support to anything he needed to keep him in the community. Thank you.
Is anybody here in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion for approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you. Hi, Peter.
It's now 10:31. I'm gonna call for any 10:30 cases for deferrals or withdrawals. Are there any cases for 10:30 for withdrawal or deferral? One more chance for people outside. Are there any deferrals for 10:30? Or withdrawals for 10:30? All right, here and now, I'm gonna go right back to the 9:30 cases. Calling BOA 564-573-39 Eden Street. Is Eden Street here? This is to extend living space for one unit into the ground-floor level of the building and install a new roof deck for exclusive unit, use of Unit 3. The violation is Article 62, Section 8, excessive floor-to-air ratio, and Article 62, Section 8, excessive building height. Name and address for the record, please.
Morning, Madam Chair. Kevin Joyce, 50 Franklin Street, Boston, 02110 for the applicant. With me is George Georges from Kendrick, manager of Kendrick LLC, and Allo Donda from Corner Architects, Inc. This property at 39 Eden Street is currently undergoing a gut renovation under an existing permit. The proposal is to improve that renovation by extending the first-floor unit to 460 square feet in the basement and add a 10-by-12 roof deck. The project has had two community meetings. The roof deck was originally proposed as 10-by-20. As a result of the community meeting, it was reduced to 10-by-12.
10-by-20 to 10-by-12?
Yes, ma'am. I have plans here. I don't know if the board has seen the revised plans as a result of the community meeting.
So the first-floor unit would be extended by 460 square feet to the basement?
That's correct.
And are there bedrooms down there?
No.
Okay. How do the plans?
There is a bedroom.
There is a bedroom and a bathroom down there. Yes, the second means to be herself back through, through, uh, rear door to the back.
Okay, how do the plans look, Mr. Pizzani?
Drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Hi, there. I'm Peter Johnson at 31 Eden Street, and I'm in favor of this proposal, especially the expansion into the basement. Any of the buildings in this neighborhood have large basement windows which are covered with plywood. This would be an improvement to the neighborhood.
And did we get your address on the record?
31 Eden Street.
Okay.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Christopher Green from Neighborhood Services. We are in support of 39 Eden Street. We had a community meeting on Wednesday, April 20th. George and his group answered all questions and were receptive to all concerns of the abudders. We have an extensive list, a list of those in support, and although we did receive a petition of opposition, many of those who signed did so before the community meeting, and many have since supported the project. Those in opposition have fears of grilling on a roof deck, which will be addressed in condo docs and et cetera. Thank you.
Okay. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to accept the plans with BRA Design Review.
Oh, I'm sorry, are you in opposition?
I am.
Oh, so please forgive me.
I'm Carrie Campbell. I own 41 Eden Street, which is the director abudder, and I am opposing Mr. Georges.
Can you please tell us why?
The roof deck is a concern for us mainly because of the security and safety of it, and we have seven rubber roofs all connecting, and nobody has a deck up there. And years ago, all of those owners agreed not to have roof decks. We're concerned about safety. We're concerned about grills being put up there. We're concerned about someone smoking and throwing the butt. And as you know, in South Boston, last week, there was a terrible fire from somebody smoking on, on their third-floor roof deck. And we don't wanna have that issue. We've also had issues with people running from deck to deck, tenants or residents. And I don't wanna be patching my roof. My neighbors don't wanna be patching their roofs anymore. And in terms of the lower-level unit, we want a structural engineer in there looking at the foundation. He's already done digging outside along the exterior, and there's been no structural engineer to look at that. And my foundation abutters, and so that's a major concern for me.
Okay. And how many buildings were there that, that are connected?
Seven.
Seven buildings?
It's L-shaped.
Okay. Thank you. Is anybody else here in opposition? Uh, response from?
On the fire issue, our property's being fully sprinkled. We've also put strong language in the condo docs that restrict the roof deck, no prohibit grills on the roof deck. The way they reduce the roof deck, they've got a walkway going out to it for security, basically security, plus wrought iron, wrought iron gate that they've put onto the roof deck, which was all as a result of going through the community process. This is the first.
This hasn't been built, has it?
No.
Okay.
This is, this is the first. We've heard of the structural issues, but we do have a licensed person on the site.
We're not digging into the basement. The basement was used as living space prior. This building's been abandoned for about seven years, or unoccupied for seven years. There was evidence that the basement area was part of the living space before. We're not digging down, putting down any slab or excavating inside at all. There's nine-foot-high ceilings in the basement right now, and with street-level windows also, so, and windows in the back. So we're not, we're not touching the integrity of the foundation, while even the slab is there. We, uh, we have a lot of support from the director abudder and the right side, and the others next to us, that we've addressed the fire safety issues that were brought up by bringing, by including language in the condo documents prohibiting grills, charcoal grills, gas grills, whatever. And again, this is all, this roof deck is only for the third-floor unit, not for the other units, so we reduced the size. It was very limited.
Thank you. So in the back, you wanted to put, voice your opposition, too?
Uh, yeah, my name is Mark Donahue. I own 43 Eden Street at the bucks Carrie Campbell's buildings. My concern was the rooftop deck. It seems like the violations on rooftop decks, even though there is no, there are laws against open grilling and cooking, it seems like there's a lot of violations. Friends of mine just lost their condo due to a situation like that in South Boston. So it's really a safety situation for our buildings.
Thank you. Given the testimony, may I have a motion, please?
I'll continue my motion, which was to accept the proposal with BRA Design Review, and also to work out the, you know.
Continue conversations with the abudders?
Yeah, about, about the roof deck, yeah.
Okay. Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yeah, I'm opposed because of the roof deck. I'm against the roof deck.
Okay, um, motion carries. Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
Thank you.
Calling BOA 582-886-100 Federal Street. This project is an attached addition to a partial interior renovation of an existing building and consists of the following elements. The construction of approximately 27,500 gross square feet ground level with a small methane level, enclosed addition connected to an existing building on the Congress Street side, and is what now is an open-air plaza called the Pavilion. The conversion of the approximately 59,500 gross square feet below-grade basement, B1 level area, for office and amenity space for parking for tenants of the building. Violation is Article 21, Section 1. Setback of parapet is insufficient on Congress Street. Article 21, Section 1, setback of parapet is insufficient on Franklin Street. Article 21, Section 1, the setback of the parapet is insufficient on Matthew Street. Article 6, Section 6-3A, additional conditions required for approval of parking facilities. Article 15, Section 1, floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 49A-5, the greenway overlay, ATM use is conditional. Article 49A, the greenway overlay, takeout restaurant is conditional. And Article 7, Section 1. A, the greenway overlay, takeout restaurant is conditional; and Article seven, Section four, other conditions necessary as protection; Article eight, Section seven, item thirty-six A, takeout of a restaurant is conditional; and Article eight, Section seven, item fifty-nine, parking garage is a conditional use. Name an address for the record, please.
Yes, Jennifer Schultz, permitting counsel for applicant Gudwin Proctor, fifty-three State Street, Boston.
George Needs, project manager, Boston Properties, eight hundred Boston Street, Boston, Massachusetts. Also with us today is Michael Cantalupa, Boston Properties, senior vice president.
Good morning, Derek Johnson, Perkinsville.
Can you, the team speak up, please?
Good morning.
That's just recording. It's not amplified.
Thank you. Good morning, Derek Johnson, Perkinsville Architects, two twenty-five Franklin Street, Boston.
David Black. Haven't seen you in a while. Yes. So, please tell us what's being proposed?
Yes, good morning. We are seeking zoning relief in order to construct a ground-level glass-enclosed pavilion addition that will be attached to the existing high-rise office building located at one hundred Federal Street in downtown. The pavilion addition is intended to revitalize the underused plaza area that fronts Congress Street at present, and also seeking relief to convert existing basement-level space into additional parking solely to serve the tenants of the building, who are three of the largest financial services companies in Boston. The pavilion addition is intended to provide a day-to-night civic amenity for the downtown community, including food service, retail, gathering space, and the opportunity for evening private or public events, and should be seen as a, we hope, year-round, weather-protected extension of Post Office Square that sits kitty-corner two, where the pavilion will be sited. The parking conversion is intended to partially ameliorate the parking deficit, which is in the building. That post-construction will still only have approximately half of the parking spaces that BTD guidelines recommend for a building this size. ISD turned us down, as you heard, for FAR, parapet setbacks, and conditional use permits for the ATM and takeout restaurants that will be located in the pavilion as well as the parking in the basement. And for the last approximately eight months, we've been working with the BRA and BCDC in order to create a project that matches the urban vision for the downtown area, and we are hoping that we will be creating a valuable civic amenity for the downtown community. Thank you.
Okay. So, please tell us, so the ATM use is conditional, as is the takeout?
Yes.
Tell us exactly what takeout you're proposing. Do you have vendors in place?
We don't have any vendors confirmed at this point. However, it will be sort of a quick-serve type restaurant use, providing breakfast, lunch, and dinner. And then there's also a unit for a sort of a full-serve restaurant that will, again, be providing lunch and dinner services.
Okay, and how many parking spaces in the basement?
So, today, we have two-hundred-and-five spaces. We'll be looking to add an incremental eighty-five spaces, which will get us to two-hundred-and-ninety spaces.
Sorry, two-hundred and...
Ninety.
How do the plans look, Mr. Pizzani?
Drawings are very nice.
You know, and generally, I'm just gonna make the statement is that we do not give people pocket okay's for takeout, just so that you know that. Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Danny Chang, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We'd like to go on record in support. The applicant has the support of the downtown community and the neighborhood groups. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. John Alrick from Council Building and Hand's Office. We'd like to go on record in strong support.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Chris Tracy, senior project manager of Boston Development Authority. Although this was not subject to small project review, given the square footage, we decided to have a public meeting that we publicly advertised. Although the meeting was sparsely attended, those who attended were in full support. The BRA is fully supportive.
And the chair, members of all minor parents representing the carpenters' evening, we'd like to go on record in support.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Gary Walker, electrical workers, local one oh three, like to speak in strong support also.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Doug Meyer from the Downtown Boston Business Improvement District. The bid has been to support this project since inception. A few days ago, I mailed a hard copy support letter to your attention. However, if it got lost in the mail, it just hasn't arrived yet. I'm gonna resubmit it again to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody here in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
My motion would be to approve this with continued BRA design review, and whoever will be doing the takeout will be coming back to apply for the takeout.
There's a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
Calling BOA five six eight three six eight, one oh nine Chestnut Street. This is to extend living space by converting existing basement space to new bedroom and bathroom for Unit One. Violations: Article thirteen, Section thirteen dash one, the FAR exceeds the maximum allowed. Name an address for the record, please.
My name is Timothy Burke. I'm the architect for the project. My business address is one forty-two Berkeley Street in Boston.
Please tell us what's being proposed?
Yes, my client has a garden-level condominium in this building. The building recently redid their mechanical systems, and there's a surplus of space, right, adjacent to his unit, and we were looking for permission to use that as part of the unit to create one more bedroom.
And what's the square footage?
The existing unit is just about a thousand square feet, and it would go up to twelve-hundred-and-twenty-nine square feet.
Okay, and what's the floor-to-ceiling height?
We have eight feet.
How do the plans look, Mr. Pizzani?
Drawings are adequate. Tim, are you moving the kitchen into the basement or is it already there?
It's already there. The only change is the bedroom and a bathroom.
Thank you.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Jacob Wessel, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We'd like to go on record in support. We've received a letter of support from the Beacon Hill Civic Association and from others who live in the building and abut.
Is anybody here in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion for approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set.
Thank you very much.
Calling BOA five six zero one nine seven, two thirty-four Beacon Street. This is a demo of an existing garage at the rear of the building and reconstruct. The garage is to be reconstructed on the same footprint. Violations: Article twenty, Section two, maximum percentage of the rear yard occupied by an accessory building is excessive; Article twenty, Section four, rear yard is insufficient; and Article thirty-two, Section six, groundwater conservation overlay district applicability. Name an address for the record, please.
Good morning, Dennis Polk, the attorney. McTernan McPolk and Miller, representing the property owner, the actual condominium building. Brian Hausman, who's the property manager, is with us. We have Ted Toluq in and his team, the project architects, and Larry Hayes, who is the project engineer. Good morning.
Please tell us what's being proposed?
Yes, ma'am. The structure in question is a dilapidated, really unsafe, connected garage to this building at the corner of Beacon and Dartmouth Street on the riverside, so Abut's Backstreet, and the garage is in very, very bad shape, literally falling apart. The initial desire of the ownership of the building was to completely demolish and rebuild. The architectural commission preferred that we keep as much of it as possible and rebuild the remainder, so one actual exterior wall will remain, the rest will be rebuilt on the same footprint. This is an accessory garage to that building, which has existed for many years, and it's literally kind of sinking into the ground in some places. So, we, in preparation for coming before you, we met with the Neighborhood Association of the Back Bay. I know Mr. Castellani's here. We had an abutters meeting on-site. I know Mr. Wessel's here, and we've had no objections. I would point out one twist, if you will, which is on the groundwater trust, on the groundwater citation. We would be asking the board to pass, hold your vote, if you will, on that matter. We're still in discussions. I think the Groundwater Trust is represented here, and they're fully in support of this, but obviously, they can be heard on that.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Christian Semenelli, Groundwater Trust, and I do request a hold of signature. There was some discussion with the applicant on the trigger of this project for G-COT, but they are committed to meeting standards, so I just request a hold of signature.
How do the plans look, Mr. Pizzani? Thank you.
Very nice.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Jacob Wessel, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We'd like to go on record in support. As the applicant mentioned, we held an onsite abutters meeting and heard no objections, and they've met with the Neighborhood Association of the Back Bay.
Thank you.
Vic Castellani, speaking for the Neighborhood Association of the Back Bay. We are very concerned about any dimensional relief in the historic district, which we see as underlying protections of the district. But in this instance, we believe that ISD has erred in their citations under the groundwater. For fifty years, ISD has treated the Boston Street side, the thorough street side of Beacon Street as through streets, not under the regular zoning, and with that definition, under groundwater, there'd be no violation. Thank you.
Anybody to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to grant the zoning relief requested, continued design review, is factoring BRA.
We will have BBAC. It's already been approved.
With the proviso that we will hold our signature pending submission of groundwater.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Calling BOA five seven eight seven two six, two fifteen to two seventeen West Fifth. This is a vacant lot, new construction of two attached townhouses, three stories high, with parking garage under each unit. This is wood-framed construction, all new systems. Violations: Article thirteen, Section thirteen dash one, insufficient lot size; Article thirteen, Section thirteen dash one, insufficient additional lot area per unit; Article thirteen, Section thirteen dash one, excessive floor-to-air ratio; Article thirteen, Section thirteen dash one, insufficient usable open space, driveway is excluded; and Article thirteen, Section thirteen dash one, insufficient lot width, fifty-feet width is required because of one and two-row house and one of group of three more houses sharing a common potty wall than one of both sides of the lot lines. Name an address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is George Baranski. I'm an attorney with the business address of three fifty West Broadway in South Boston. I'm joined by Niall Sutfin, project architect of one ninety-seven Eighth Street in Charlestown. Madam Chair, members, this is a fairly simple infill construction. This is an eight-hundred-and-sixty-one-square-foot lot for which is being proposed, two-family dwelling. These would be semi-attached, side-by-side townhouse-style units. The relevant zoning district is H-one-fifty. We have a violation for the minimum lot size in this district for the first and second units. An FAR violation, the FAR maximum here is, of course, one. This project would come in at an FAR of one-point-seven-four. These would be two-three-bedroom units, I'm sorry, fifteen-hundred-and-forty-five square feet each. The building, because of the site grade, is actually several feet lower in the front as it presents to West Fifth Street than in the rear. Maximum building height on West Fifth Street to the roof line below the parapet is approximately thirty-six feet. The lot frontage here is thirty-six feet, which is typical or actually somewhat large for the neighborhood, although it doesn't meet the frontage requirements under the code. The parking spaces are accessed from garage doors in the rear of the building. Access to the rear of the lot is provided by a lot fronting on Bowen Street that my client also owns. In addition to the lot to the rear, which my client owns, as one faces the site, he also owns what is currently a single-family dwelling at two thirteen West Fifth Street, so is his own abutter. My client is his own abutter in both the right side and the rear. At this point, Doug, do you have any questions?
Yes, sorry. So, will this access be deeded? Will it be registered?
Yes, yes. So, as an aside, there will be another project coming before this board. We are setting up a community meeting for the land in the back, which is the site of what a proposed three-family dwelling, and that's gonna have a shared driveway once this project that's presently before the board or now before the board and the project that is coming up are, in fact, completed, if both are approved. There'll be a shared driveway between the two properties, and also, for that matter, the two thirteen West Fifth Street property.
So, will these be combined lots, or they'll still maintain separate lots, but they'll be still deep cross-deeded?
Correct. Separate lots, and they'll be cross-easements between them.
So, these are three separate projects?
Correct.
Common ownership?
Correct.
And yet why...
The total number of units being added are six.
Total number for all three sites?
Correct. The single-family will be a conversion to a two. This is a new two-family into three-family in the rear, for a total of seven units over the existing one, so six units will be added.
And total square footage?
Well, under fifteen thousand, well, under twenty thousand.
Okay, thank you.
Were there structures on these lots before, or have they been empty lots all along?
As long as I remember, Mr. Ehrlich, historically, there may have been. Did we get addresses assigned, Niles, for this site?
Yes, we did. I think to answer your question, the only current structure on this entire site, the combined three parcels, is the one located at two thirteen West Fifth Street, which you can see. It's, this one, here on the left side of the site, there is the existing one-family house there. Right. No, I'm looking at the building map and just the two fifty, two seventeen site. Turnly vacant.
Apparently not, because ISD assigned us that street address. There would have been an ISD street address if there had been a building there, so we assume not.
May I, any other questions?
Will you address the roof deck issue, please?
The building will have two roof decks, one exclusive to each unit. The decks will be a hundred-and-twenty square feet in total. Access is by roof hatch, in each case.
By roof hatch, not by head house?
Correct. I don't, is that correct, Niles? I don't see a...
We will agree to do it as a roof hatch. Mr. Pizzani?
Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, John Allison from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on record in support. We did hold an abutters meeting on-site about this proposal, and it was positively received. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, John Alrick from Council Building and Hand's Office. We'd like to go on record in support.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Ryan Spitz. On behalf of City Council at large, Michael Flaherty. We'd like to go on record in support.
Thank you. Is anybody here in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion for approval, BRA design review.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set.
Thank you.
Calling BOA five seven six one zero zero, sixty-nine Rare Boston Street. Assist to build a new five-level addition to an existing hotel, the Holiday Inn Express at sixty-nine Boston Street in Dorchester. This will add sixty new rooms to an existing hotel. First floor will have a breakfast lounge area, meeting rooms. Violations: Article nine, Section one, extension of a nonconforming use is conditional; Article sixty-five, Section forty-one, off-street loading requirement is insufficient; Article sixty-five, Section sixteen, height is excessive. Name an address for the record, please.
Hello. Good morning. My name is John Slater. I'm with the firm of Sheraton and Lodging in Boston at one oh one Federal Street, representing the project we're calling.
Hi, my name is Beth Shearer. I'm the vice president of Jaten Hotel Management, and I'm here representing the project.
Thank you. So, this is an extension of a nonconforming use. Can you speak to the off-street loading requirements, please?
Sure. The, as was said at the beginning, just a second, say, this is a, there's an existing hotel there now, Holiday Inn Express and Suites, and this is a five-story expansion to connect, which will be connected directly to. The floors will be aligned. That's the reason for the height variance, so that the floors can be aligned. And so, the off-street loading and deliveries will be through the existing space in the existing hotel.
Okay. How do the plans look, Mr. Pizzani?
Drawings are adequate. Is there increase in parking as a result of the increase in rooms?
There will be additional parking spaces added.
How many?
Be nineteen. We'll go from a hundred-and-sixty-two to a hundred-and-eighty-one spaces.
And what does the room count go to?
It goes to a hundred-and-seventy-four.
And so you have 162 spaces, you're right.
181.
181 spaces. There are 162 there now. There'll be 19 to add it to get to 181.
And, and Mr. Pizzani, the plans do show the loading accommodated in the current structure?
Yes, it does.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, John Allison from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on record in support of this proposal and ask for a continued BRA design review. I would also like to note there is a direct Abutter here who has expressed a hope that the proponent will continue to work with him throughout the process.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Joe McGeekren, City Council, Frank Baker's office. We'd like to echo the sentiments in the Mayor's office.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Jessica Rodriguez, City Council at Large, Neuse Society, George's office, and we'd also like to go on record in support.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Ryan Spitz on behalf of City Council at Large, Michael Flaherty. We'd like to go on record, echo the comments in the Mayor's office, and go on record in support. Thank you.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Gary Walker, electrical workers local 103. I'd like to speak in strong support also. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Minor Perez, representing the Carpenters Union, would like to go on record in support of it.
Thank you. Is anybody here in opposition?
Madam Chair, my name is Lad Thorne. I own the Fortress facility. I'm an Abutter to the project. I am not, per se, in opposition to this project. The reason is, I don't know anything about it. I've been entirely left out of the loop. I'm rather stunned that I've been left out of the loop. And I know that there's an appeal process that's available to me, once the documents are signed, if this is approved today. And I just am hopeful that the developer is very interested and very helpful in making me aware of what's going on, so that I know what's going on around me, and then we can probably come to a happy resolution, but I certainly want to know what's going on next to my building.
Thank you. Is anybody else here in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion for approval, BRA design review.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? You've heard it, so I'm hoping you're going to be in touch with the Abutter, so that everything proceeds smoothly.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Calling BOA 585-583, 197 to 199 N Street.
Madam Chair, members of the board, I introduce myself from this case.
This is in addition to the second and third floor, two small rooms and a bathroom supported by rear columns and a fence in the rear yard. Violations Article 15, Section 1, floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 19, Section 1, required rear yard setback, fence only at six feet is insufficient. Article 20, Section 1, required rear yard setback, fence only at six, six feet high is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Patrick Behoney, and I'm the owner and applicant.
Please tell us what's being proposed?
Good morning, Madam Chair, and may I please, the board. We have a modest addition, not visible from N Street. It's two rooms into the rear yard on the second and third floor. The violation, FAR, related to the structure itself is floor area ratio. The other two-dimensional violations are exclusively related to the fence. It's an eight-foot fence in the rear yard, and it's in three feet of the, because the lot is 73 feet, the first 70 feet of the fence are excluded under the base code exception for each district.
This is an eight-foot fence?
It is an eight-foot fence, Madam Chair.
And six-foot is allowed as of right?
Correct.
So you're requesting two things, in essence, here. First, the, the addition, the two-room addition?
Yes.
Which is how many square feet, all told?
675 square feet. It's, brings it to an FAR of about two, which is consistent with the neighborhood. It's consistent with the proposed zoning, and I believe the BRA just completed a study for South Boston, because that's the first area to be rezoned, and, and the average is approximately 1.97 FAR as it stands. So it would be consistent with the neighborhood.
Okay, tell us about that fence, then?
So, again, the fence is eight feet, and the first, only the last three feet of the fence in the rear yard of the fence would be, affect zoning here today. And the reason for that is because, again, of the, the first 70 feet exclusion for side yard violation. But the reason that the fence is eight feet instead of the allowable six feet is because in the rear yard, it slopes considerably back for drainage purposes, so it's at least between 20 and, in some cases, 30 inches below the surrounding neighbors. So to maintain some continuity between the fence heights, we have adjusted for that with an eight-foot fence.
And so is that just a rear yard fence, or?
It's, it's eight, it'll be consistent all the way through.
All the way around, eight feet?
Yeah, so it's, but what's appealable today is the, the last three feet of the side yard and the, and the rear yard section.
The fence is appealable, right? Because it's, okay. Is, any, any questions from the board?
There's no citation for the eight-foot fence, is there?
There is. It's, it's the bottom two, Mr. Chair.
It's above the side yard.
Side yard and rear yard. In parentheses, I think it says fence.
Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, John Allison from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We'd like to go on record in strong support. We did hold an onsite Abutters meeting, and there was no opposition expressed. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, John Alrick from Council Building and Hand's office. We'd like to go on record in strong support.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Ryan Spitz on behalf of City Council at Large, Michael Flaherty. We'd like to go on record in strong support.
Thank you. Is anybody here in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion for...
Except with BRA design review.
Madam Chair, if, if I may remove the design review provision, it's not visible from N Street.
The, and neither is the addition?
Correct.
So...
Change my motion to accept.
So it's a straight approval?
With a straight approval, yep.
Okay, is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set.
Thank you.
I'll go back to the 10:30 cases. Were there any deferrals or withdrawals for the people that may have been outside? If there are, write the address, please. Address, please.
6163 Dustin Street, Brighton.
For the record, calling BOA 584-990, 61 to 63 Dustin Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Maureen McGuire, 61 Dustin Street, Brighton, Mass.
Please tell us what you're requesting.
I'm requesting a deferral until, the end of July, preferably.
Tell us why.
The community meeting that was to take place was, has not taken place, so things are not in place to proceed with a hearing.
Motion for deferral.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. A date, please.
You'll have a date of July 26.
July 26.
Yep.
And we had one case that was still outstanding?
Yes, they are here now.
The building code?
Do you want to break them?
They, um, we will take a 10-minute break, so please wait. We need this, so that the technical staff in the back can ensure that everything is being livestreamed appropriately.